Meeting of for the Sagittar zoning board of appeals here for Wednesday, August 19, 2020. Can you do roll call for me, please?
Bont.
Here.
Baugh. Kubazdiak not here. Ludlow not here. Blacity, oh, here she is. She's just coming on now. I'm going to mark her yes. And Zerfus.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Oh, thank you very much. Cindy on here, it says, I don't know if there's, next thing it talks about is agenda changes. I don't know if there are any agenda changes anybody needs to make at this time.
I just want to make a few comments before we open the unfinished business.
Okay, go ahead. I'll approve that.
Okay, I want to tell you that there were questions brought up about the floodplain. And I just wanted to explain to make sure everybody knows that if you're building something new in a floodplain, you have to elevate to be out of the floodplain above 584 feet above sea level. And the state of Michigan requires 585 above sea level. And the application takes structure out of the floodplain and makes it compliant with the floodplain. The other comment I want to make is one thing that was brought up was the deck. And currently as the deck exists, it's legal non-conforming. And if we want to talk about the deck, we can do that at a separate meeting if they need a variance to change or to change the deck, raise it lower, whatever. But currently it's legal non-conforming. So I do not consider it part of this application, nor was it noticed as such. And those are the end of my comments. We left off before the public hearing was opened. We left off with the applicant going over the application. And that's probably where we should pick up. I think Greg Plow is first in Zoom. And he will be able to lead us through all the documents he submitted. There were some problems when I got the documents. Some of them wouldn't print, some of them wouldn't send. But in the end, I think we're good and Greg will be able to lead us through what he submitted.
Gotcha. In looking at our zoning board of appeals handbook, since this was tabled, we need to have a motion to untable this.
To remove it from the table.
Bring it back to public hearing.
I move that we remove this application V 20002 from the table.
I second.
All right, and seconded by Zach. We still have, I hate to say, we still have to have a vote, but that's what we have to do.
Have to have a roll call for that. Sorry. It's just the way it is. And these are in alphabetical order, no preferences intended. Bont.
Approved.
Baugh. Blacity. You're muted. I'll come back to you. Zach.
Yes.
And Blacity.
Yes, sorry.
Motion carries.
Oh, there's Steph. Thank you very much, Steph, for making it. And Zach, yourself also. So now since that has been brought back, the applicant is here. So we are now going to open the public hearing procedure. And the first thing is we will hear, Cindy, you have any other comments you want to make before we ask the applicant to make any comments?
No, I would suggest that we just go ahead and let the applicant finish describing his application and any revisions that he made to it as requested by the board. And then after he's complete, then we can open the public hearing to public comments and our letters that we received from neighbors.
All right, thank you very much. So if whoever wants to make the first presentation for the application, name and just where you're from.
My name is Greg Plow and I live at 295 Park Street in Sagittar.
Thank you, Greg, and welcome.
Thank you.
I think that Greg is going to present some documents to us. So Greg, you have the floor.
All right, Greg. Hopefully you can all see, move this over so I can see it. You should all be familiar with pages one, two, three, and four of the initial submission. We made one change. We eliminated the part in number two about the possibility of moving the building. And I'll explain that a little further as I go along. And again, this last page was exactly the same that was initially presented. I've written the following attached letter. It says, "Per your request, working with architect Chuck Carlson, we examine the possibility of moving the existing building west towards Park Street to make it compliant with front and side required setbacks. Unfortunately, doing so would make the building non-compliant by almost seven and a half feet along the very busy Park Street. This would make it then necessary for vehicles to back directly onto Park Street for entry and exit from the property. To do this at the start of a hill and a curve would create additional safety concerns on this busy street. The building has been in this spot for almost 80 years. There have been no concerns regarding lifting this building in its existing position from any of the surrounding neighbors. The building to the left is only nine feet from the water setback. And the building to the right is 26 feet from the water setback. This building at this point is 15 feet from the back water setback. One could almost draw a straight line between the three buildings. We are not moving a brand-new building onto one of the smallest and narrow slants on Park Street. If that were the case, I would agree 100% that all setback requirements, front, back, and side, should be met. We're requesting only to lift an existing building above the floodplain levels in dangerous water conditions that exist and are predicted to continue into the future. By raising the building in its existing spot, I believe the spirit of the ordinance is observed. Public safety secured and substantive justice done. We are therefore submitting a slightly revised package which requests only the permission to raise the building in its existing position out of the flood zone." That's signed by me. I could take a minute and give you a little bit of history. We purchased the property in 2010. It was in pretty rough shape. As you can see from the view of the seawall there, it was pretty dilapidated. And when we purchased the building, we had no idea we'd be dealing with the floodwaters we are existing today. We actually had a beach in front of the building that we could walk out. I'll show you again another view, as you can see, of a pretty beat-up, falling apart, decrepit seawall that we invested in, replaced, and put a new dock in. We've also invested in trying to make the property more attractive by covering it with a completely new metal roof and trying to paint it in muted tones so it would disappear, if you will, from the riverside as much as possible to keep it discreet and make it look good. We continue to try and make the property, and our plans are to make it even look better in the future. Unfortunately, you see the current water conditions we are dealing with. These pictures show how close the water is coming to our property. There are now at present 352 sandbags in front of it to prevent it from flooding at this point. But you can see even still, the waters are very high on the Kalamazoo River and predicted to continue, which puts this building at risk. Couple more views there. This is a footprint of the existing building where it's at. As you can see by the view on the map, right here in this area, this is one of the smallest lots in the area. It's 15% below what is considered a normal, a legal-sized lot today. This is where the existing building is. And if we looked at moving it back, you could see right here that would move us dangerously close to Park Street and create car conditions where we would no longer be able to turn around in this footprint area. Therefore, our request is as presented with these drawings earlier at the previous meeting. Because of the current conditions, we would like to simply raise the building to protect that. In addition, as you can see, as part of our presentation, there are letters from surrounding neighbors that say they all support this idea. I finally end with a simple comment. This was in this week's paper. I don't know who Gordon LaForte is, but he writes, "The current contract provides in-ad quit safety on Park Street where I live. Last season, the road surfaced 280,000 vehicles. Walking or biking on the street is a nightmare." That was in this week's commercial record. So I conclude with a simple comment that I read all of the training for a ZBA position in between our meeting last week and this week. And one of the key comments in there that I picked up was, "When considering both use and non-use variances, the ZBA must ensure that the spirit of the ordinance is observed. Public safety secured and substantive justice done." And that's what I'm asking is that you consider the spirit of the ordinance and public safety as it relates to Park Street and approve us raising this building. And I believe that ends my five minutes.
All right. Thank you very much, Greg. Appreciate that. If we have any other questions or comments, we'll get back with you on that.
It would be appropriate, Dick, at this point to open the public hearings to see if there are any comments from the public.
Cindy?
Yes.
I'll take care of that.
Okay.
So at this time, it talks about all of that. So if there are any public things or comments that need to be made, if you would step forward and at least give us who you are and where you live, we'd appreciate it. Any comments for or against?
If there's anybody that is on the Zoom meeting that would like to make public comments, they could unmute themselves or raise their hand and be prepared to make a public comment.
Cindy, do we have some other ones on there?
I think if you have a cell phone, it is star six.
Thank you.
I'm not seeing anything.
So there's nothing that you can see coming up?
Nothing from public comments, although we do have to look at our correspondence that we received. If I can find that. We have letters in support from Douglas Sanders at 255 Park Street, John and Annette Dart at 342 Park Street, David, and another David Blanchard and Mrs. Blanchard, Deborah Blanchard.
Deborah, yes.
And I have one more.
We have Douglas Sanders and John and Annette Dart. Is that it, correct?
Dart, yep. So we have three letters in support of the application.
Does anyone wish to hear all of the reading on that?
They're in your packet or I can read them if you desire.
No.
They've been available to us in the package and I have read them all.
Yes.
Perfect.
Steph, you got them in the package. And so did you get those too, Zach?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, yeah, if, do you have any questions on any one of those comments that were made in support of the applicant?
I do not.
No, Zach?
No.
No, Jim?
No, I have no.
Well, I guess in that respect is that I will close our public meeting and we will go into our own deliberation. So knowing what Greg just presented to us on the applicant from what he previously had presented to us to what he has presented this time, you can see it's a lot, a lot more detail. And so we need to take a look at the any comments that you want to make before we go into the standards.
Two things of note that I had the time to look at from the time we met last week and I wasn't home and didn't have the packet in front of me and only the memory. And now is that, two things. One, Mr. Plow already mentioned that was, this is a small lot. To me, that factors in quite a bit into how we're looking at options for this property. And the other one is that this is an emergency request. This isn't, this is to keep water out of the house. And so I think those are two, as we look at the standards, points that carry some decent weight with me on how we analyze the property. So those are my comments.
Okay, all right. Any other comments before we get into our standards?
I had one question.
Go ahead, Zach.
So when I watched the meeting, obviously there was discussion about moving the property back towards Park Street. As it sits now, just on its current footprint, not lifted or not moved, there, it's conforming along Park Street, correct?
Correct.
Meets that required setback?
Yes.
Okay.
That is, it's on the, which we would consider the front setback, that is compliance, and also one-side setback is in compliance.
Right.
So you have one side that's not, and the back setback is not in compliance.
Right, the back being the waterfront.
The water, yes, yes, sir.
Correct, okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Good day, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
A clarification question of Cindy's explanation at the beginning about moving it out of the floodplain. It's my understanding that other properties, and I'm referring specifically to the Sagittar Yacht Club, they were required to raise the grade as well as keep the building above the floodplain. And what's required, do we have to change the grade here to get the grade above the floodplain? Or is moving the house up sufficient? Because you're going to have the house being an island if the front wall floods.
I can maybe clarify the answer to that. Typically, when a building is raised to be out of the floodplain, it has two options. It can either be raised with fill, filling in the lot, or it can be raised on stilts. And this application, although it is on piers, that's a foundational aspect, it will be filled to be out of the floodplain. And on the street side, that, you can see on the topographical survey, that the street side is already out of the floodplain. It's the back of the house, the riverside, that is below the floodplain. So they would have to get fill and they would have to get a letter of map amendment from FEMA to raise it out of the floodplain so they could rebuild on the same location. So it's lifting, filling, and getting the letter of map amendment so it's no longer in the floodplain. So it wouldn't be an island. It would be, the back might be kind of like an island side. The riverside might be like an island side, but it will not be an island.
Well, if the floor of the house is level and the front of the house is below the floodplain level, the rear of the house must be as well right now. The property is not because they've got a large step down there.
There is a slope on the topographical survey that shows the street side of the house. The street side of the land is above the floodplain. They have to fill the whole part that is below the floodplain that would, that would require the entire house to be lifted to, almost to the street level. So it would not be an island.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe Chuck has a better explanation than that, but that's the way I understand that.
Okay, appreciate that. Any other comments? Otherwise, we can proceed to the four standards that we have. And knowing that we have to comply with all four standards. And if we do not, then we will have to take it from there and the applicant will have to take it from there. So remember that we will discuss each one and come up with some thoughts and considerations for the applicant, all right, and respect to the standards. Who would like to take the first one? Anybody in particular?
I'll take the first.
Zach, you want to take number one?
Sure. Number one, "That strict compliance with area setbacks, frontage height, bulk, or density would unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose or would render conformity unnecessarily burdensome." So I think that, you know, from what I gathered from watching the last meeting and the application that I'm reading, that I think that strict compliance, I think it meets the standard. It's a small lot. No matter where you move it, you know, you're going to have a non-conformity. So strict compliance, unless you are building a new home, would be, I'm seeing it as unnecessarily burdensome. You know, the applicant did mention moving the house back would create an issue with parking or using their garage. And I'm not sure you can strictly comply with the setbacks.
Okay.
I have a different consideration on that one, sir.
Okay, go ahead, Jim.
That strict compliance for all the variances would be unnecessarily burdensome. They would have to build a new house. I think that's unnecessarily burdensome. What we have to do to grant a variance is show that there is a practical difficulty here. That's the requirement. And a property owner seeking a variance must establish that the zoning gives rise to a hardship amounting to a virtual confiscation or disadvantage must be so great as to deprive the owner of all reasonable use of the property. That's a practical difficulty. And while there are practical difficulties in meeting all four setbacks, there are other options possible. And I would suggest if we move the house backward to the edge, backwards towards the road, if we move the house west to the edge of the buildable area and moved it, rotated it slightly side, counterclockwise, so that the northern edge of the property lines up with the side setback, we have now satisfied the side setback. We are still satisfying the front yard setback and we are not encroaching even into the parking area as it exists today. And we would then minimize the variance that's required. And all of the variance would be on the front yard side of the house and it would be minimized. So it's our obligation to present the minimum variance needed to satisfy the request here and eliminate the practical difficulty. So right since you're already raising the house, moving the house six feet, you'd have difficulty considering that to be a practical difficulty according to the definition. So I would hold that meeting all four variances would be a practical difficulty, that consolidating all the variances to the front yard, excuse me, to the rear yard, the waterfront side, would be the minimum possible here.
Okay, so you're saying that the strict compliance of everything would be unreasonable, but a possibility of at least one setback, and that would be the back setback?
Yes.
Would be the only one that wouldn't be in compliance?
Yes. So that would, that would be granting a lesser variance than is requested and eliminating the practical difficulty of having to construct a new home to meet all four, all four setback requirements and allow them to use the existing building on the existing lot.
That would be standard number two more than number one.
Cindy, let's, Cindy, let's just take one at a time here before we get in.
That's, that number two is different than number one.
Yeah, two is different, okay? So in looking at that, Steph, any comments? No, Steph's not there.
She's muted. Let me see if I can unmute her.
Sorry, I'm flipping back and forth. I should have printed my papers out. But I guess I'm getting hung up just a little bit on standard one with the unnecessarily burdensome phrase. I understand part of what's being said by Jim. I'm not sure where that verbiage comes from. Can you tell us what you were reading there? Where is that from?
From the ZBA hand paragraph three.
It's, it's the standard that talks about unnecessarily burdensome, that you cannot consider cost the only issue for unnecessarily burdensome, but it can be part of what's unnecessarily burdensome. And part of what I understand, if moving the house, relocating, you would incur much greater costs for reconnecting to utilities. And being that the neighbors are all in support of this application, and remember what you're granting is just a three-foot in-height change to what's existing. You're not granting closer to the property line or an addition that's closer to the property line. You're just looking at the three feet in heights. You're looking at the top part of the building will be three feet higher than the existing building closer than the property line. That's what's allowed.
Cindy, I, okay, I hear you, but I don't agree with that. Anytime you take a building and they're going to think about putting it, I don't, I'm not sure. Are they putting it on a pier? Are they putting it on stilts? Are they putting it on a concrete wall? I haven't heard any definite things. Anytime you do that, in the construction world I've been in for many years, you're going to have to have changes on those things, no matter whether you jacked it up or you moved it. And electricity sets, with electricity sets, he's going to have to move that too. So it doesn't, I hear what Jim's saying and I understand where Greg is coming from. But if they were to move that, my comment would be, it's possible.
It's possible. The question is whether or not it's possible or if it's unnecessarily burdensome.
I can address.
Everything is possible if you have enough money.
Mr. Chairman, I can address that point. I personally moved a house and built a new house. And in the greater scheme of things, moving a house, lifting a house, building a new foundation, the cost to connect the utilities is minor compared to the overall cost of the project. It's not unnecessarily burdensome.
Okay. So any other comments we want to make about that? So do you feel that standard number one could be approved? Any more comments?
I am of a mind to approve standard one under the unreasonably burdensome. And this is my thinking, although I understand a lot of what Jim is saying. I don't think he would have come to us if he did not have water encroaching on his property. This isn't a desire to do something better, to make the house different, to make, to upgrade it, to renovate it. He's simply trying to get his house high enough for water. And when we're talking about burdensome, to me, I don't know why we couldn't grant a variance to save his house from potentially being flooded without burdening him with grant a variance to save his house from potentially being flooded without burdening him with strict conformity on all of the other sidebacks. So that's my thinking.
Okay. All right, appreciate that, Steph. So there's no other comments? We need to take a vote on number one?
Well, we have to do all the standards first, and then we can take a vote.
Excuse me. So let me just, let me ask, ask a question here. Do you mostly feel that this would be in compliance, number one? Because we'll have to continue on, and we'll look at all of them, but think about that as we go through. Steph, would you take number two, please?
Yes, I have to. Am I leaving the screen when I go to my, my documents? Do you not see me when I grab my documents?
That's okay, even if we don't see it, you can read it and comment.
Okay, the second standard is that a variance would do substantial justice to the owner as well as to the other property owners in the district. Or whether a lesser relaxation would give substantial relief and be more consistent with justice to others.
What do you think?
You want me to?
Huh?
You wanting me to lead on that?
Um, if, if, yeah, if, if you don't need to, anybody else want to make a comment on that?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
We have other properties in this area, and this, this gets into the next one. The circumstances we're talking about here are not unique to this property. There are several properties in this, in this area that have the same conditions, narrow lots, small lots, low lots. That a lesser relaxation would give substantial relief to the, in line with what I just described, would give relief to the applicant here, and it would be more consistent with justice to others because we have held others to meeting or doing the absolute minimum of variance. And to be consistent to them and to others, I think we should offer this person the minimum relief necessary to meet the requirement so that they can use their house.
So you're saying you would prefer lesser relaxation?
Yes, I would.
And if I can remember, wasn't there, there was another house down south of where this is, where we gave them lesser relaxation that was close to the Randy, to Randy's?
Yes, the one right next to Randy's.
Right next to Randy's. Zach, do you remember that or not?
No, I don't remember that one.
Okay.
The one that's on the construction right now, Zach, wrapped in, wrapped in the white, white weatherproofing paper.
Was it the other side of Park Street?
No, it's on the same side. It's waterfront.
Same side.
I think I can recall, yeah. I don't remember what the lesser relaxation was in that one, though.
I don't recall a lesser relaxation either. That was 841 Park Street. The Maureen was her first name. I can't remember her last name right now. But they wanted to lift the house and build on the same footprint and fill in one of the voids. There was a, a place that was left that didn't meet the setback that they wanted to fill in, that somebody previously had taken and built, built around a tree that was there so they could save the tree. And you granted a more restrictive variance than what, not than what they asked for, but than what was allowed by the zoning ordinance. They were required to be 10 feet back, and the existing house was two and a half feet, and you allowed them to fill in that little blank space where the tree had been. So that was that application. And that was, that lot was 37 feet wide.
Was that? I couldn't remember that one, but thank you very much.
If I can share my screen, Mr. Chairman, I'll show you what we're talking about, what I'm talking about here.
Okay, go ahead.
What, what are you seeing on my screen right now?
You would have to get permission from Kirk to share your screen. He would have to grant you co-host abilities.
Kirk?
Yes, I, I think I'm working on it as we speak right here. I think you have access now. If you hit the share screen, it should, it should work.
That's what I want to share right there. You should be looking at a drawing of the house.
Not yet, but.
No, you, you see the share screen button on the, if you hit share screen, it should, you have to click on that. There you go.
Okay. Are you looking at the drawing of the house here?
Yes, yes.
Okay, the, the yellow area here is the conforming buildable area. You can see that the garage is non-conforming. This is their parking area. In the last meeting, what we requested was that they move this corner of the house, this, this gray is as it exists today, back to this point, to the corner of the buildable area, which would extend the back of the house into this area. There's still a lot of room there, and you're still inside the city easement. However, what I'm proposing now meets the requirements that the applicant has asked for. He wanted to save these trees. He wanted to improve the view by moving this over. We're improving the view, and he wanted to save his parking area. If we moved this corner of the house, because we're lifting the house off the foundation already and moving it, if we move this corner of the house back to the edge of the buildable area and align the north edge of the house with the setback, the 10-foot setback, which is shifting at six feet rearward, 6.66 by my drawing, their architect could give us different numbers. But we're, we're pretty close here. We're talking about moving this corner back six feet and shifting the house over about three feet. And what that does is it gives us conformance along the back. It maintains their parking area. It maintains these trees. And it opens up the side yard setback, which would do justice to the neighbors, even though they're not complaining. It would do justice to those property owners and all future property owners. And it would maintain the intent of the side setback, which is to allow safety access and security. What that would entail is we would have a 3.3-foot variance on this corner of the house. We'd have about a seven-foot variance on this corner of the house. And we'd have about a four-foot variance on this corner of the house, all of that variance along the backyard side of the house. And doing that, given that we're already lifting the house off the foundation, would not present an unreasonable burden. And it would give us conformance on the side setback and have just one variance on the rear. And it'd bring us more inconformance on the rear yard side. So we're reducing the variance, and we're eliminating one variance with something that is not burdensome to the owner, given the project that they're already undertaking.
Okay, all right. Any questions on Jim's little, you have a question, what Jim's showing here, anybody? So Jim, what you're saying is you're trying to pull aside variance to compliance. A road, the front setback would still be in compliance. The side would be in compliance, but the, we would need, have a three-foot or a seven-foot or a four-foot variance on the backside here.
Yes, and we would be minimizing the variance on the backside property. So we're eliminating one variance, and we're minimizing another variance while meeting the applicant's needs.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on that? All right.
I don't know how to stop sharing.
Kirk caught it. What does he do to stop sharing on his? Probably hit the same button again.
I don't have that option. That's my problem.
Okay, well, Jim, we gotta, we have to move on, if you're all right with that?
Yes, I'm fine. So I'm saying granting a lesser relief for question number two.
Okay. Number three, where it says, I'll take that one, it says where the plight of the owner is unique, is due to unique circumstances of the property and not to general neighborhood conditions. Greg gave us a lot of information about his area. I don't, I'm not, I don't, I'm not sure that his is unique. I mean, that whole entire river is along that side is, is different. So the I think that it's not general, it, it's really general neighborhood condition, so it's really not unique.
I think Jim has a decently compelling case for granting substantial relief and still also the objective of bringing some parts of the property where it's feasible into conformity. So I appreciate that, and that was, that was good work. I'd be interested to see how it differed from what was originally in our packet. It seemed like what they had shown originally on the document was a moving up even further, and then that would entail taking out the trees and I think blocking the view. And so it seems like what you did, Jim, was a lesser move than what was in the packet originally. And I think you're suggesting that might be more amenable.
Yes, I am.
Yes, that is correct, Stephanie. It seems, yeah, it is then. Because the front setback is still, you still have, I think it's a little more than 25 feet. But anyway, which gives you room to drive a car in, turn around, and, and head back out, but and so that's, that's true. Any other comments on number three? Okay, let's move on to the fourth one. Jim, I think, I don't think you've taken one. Is that yours?
Can you scroll down to number four for me, please?
That is, there you go.
The problem is not self-created or based on personal financial circumstances. Given that they're raising the house and going through all this exercise to save the house, no, I don't think it's based on personal financial circumstances, nor is it self-created that it's in the floodplain.
Right. Okay. Any other questions on that? Any, any general comments? Since we've gone through all four, all four standards, any comments generally that, does anyone want to make? On that before we make a motion and, and go from there? So after hearing all four of those and comments by that, we have to vote on that? Is there a motion?
Are we vote, are we voting, what are we voting on? The applicant's request or a lesser relief?
Well, I think, is it, do you have to make a motion on what you, what we're asking, based on all four of those?
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Is that correct, Cindy?
You can make a motion to approve or deny, or you can make a motion to approve with, with conditions.
Correct.
And you can also make a motion to recommend a planning commission to modify the zoning ordinance.
Right.
Okay, I'm prepared to make a motion with conditions. Here's the motion. I move contingent upon the owner obtaining separate approvals as required to allow construction within the floodplain area for zoning dimensional variance request to be 200002, requesting a setback variance for 295 Park Street, that the following variance be approved. Front yard, no variance allowed. Side yards, no variance allowed. Rear yard variance from the required 25-foot setback from the lakefront to be as follows. The northeast corner of the existing building to be allowed a variance of 3.5 feet for a setback of 21.5 feet. The southeast corner of the main building be allowed a variance of seven feet for a setback of 18 feet. The southeast corner of the existing building addition to be allowed a variance of four feet for a setback of 21 feet. The variance shall taper from each of the specified building corners to the next building corner. The intent of this variance allowance is to align the front yard portion of the existing building as relocated with the required front yard setback as required in the zoning ordinance, and to align the north edge of the building once relocated with the northern side yard setback as required in the zoning or requirements for the lot under consideration.
Jim, we got to have something, I, I hear you. We got to have something in there too about them raising the house three feet to be out of that, out of the floodplain. Did you have that in there?
Well, I've got contingent upon the owner obtaining separate approvals as required to allow construction within the floodplain area.
Okay, okay, gotcha. That's right, at the start there, all right.
So it's, it's contingent upon that that these dimensional variances would be allowed.
Okay, does everyone understand what Jim has put into motion? Zach?
I believe so. I believe it was quite a motion.
I know, I hear you.
But I believe it followed his drawing that he so kindly shared with, with the rest of the board. It made sense to me that we would eliminate the side setbacks. It would be inconformity everywhere except along the backyard.
Okay. Steph, comment?
I, I agree. I appreciate the, also, I don't have any further questions. I do understand the motion.
Well, I think that the thing that is very important that this house is out of the floodplain and that it is raised up, that's to save a, a beautiful place like that along that street, I sure would hate to see anything not be there. It needs to be raised up. You can see by the pictures that the applicant has proposed to us with sandbags and everything else. And so I think that's very important that we understand that. And also Jim's drawings, I appreciate that. Thanks, Jim, for that. And so we had a motion presented by Jim. Is there a second?
Yeah, I will second the motion.
Seconded by Stacy, by Steph, excuse me. Cindy, we have to have a roll call on that?
We do. Again, they're in alphabetical order, no, no preference. Bond?
Yes.
Baugh?
Yes.
Velocity?
Yes.
Isurfas?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Since that is carried and presented, Cindy, that goes into the office, correct? And where does he go from there?
He can either apply to the planning commission to amend the zoning ordinance, or he can meet the conditions of the variance request.
Okay.
Or, or he has 21 days to file an appeal with circuit court.
Okay. All right. So I will, at this point,
Ask a question?
I will close the.
Ask some questions?
Yeah, just a minute, Greg. Yeah, in fact, you know what, go ahead. Yes, sir.
Yes, we do have time for public comment on our agenda.
Yeah, I have, Greg, I've closed the. Greg, I've closed the, the deliberation, so please go ahead. Now we have time for any public comment.
Okay. Let's start with Jim. Jim, are you familiar with LinkedIn?
Yes.
Yes. Can I confirm that you viewed my profile on LinkedIn within the last couple of days?
I didn't use it. I looked at it.
Can you advise me how that affected this application? How you're seeking additional information outside the application that was submitted?
It did not. Your LinkedIn application is public information.
Okay, all right. And then the other question I said, can you confirm that in the previous meeting that you said you would move the house completely off the lot? Build a new foundation and then move it back onto the lot? Can you tell me where you would move the house to?
It's not my problem. It's just that would be, that would make it easier to dig the foundation.
But you, you're, you suggested that as one of the, one of the things that you would do if it was your project, and so my question is. Where would you place a house on, on looking at the property lines and the, the situation? You said that's not your problem, but you said. As part of your decision, that that's where you would move the house to. You would move the house off, so I'm asking. Follow-up as to where you would move the house to.
I would ask the house movers where we could move it.
Ask the house?
They're pretty good at doing those things.
Okay. I, Richard, you mentioned that this sets the standard for all others in the, in the, in that area. And Cindy made it clear that this does not set a, a standard. You, you suggested it again tonight. Is this a standard for all the other houses in the neighborhood or?
I did not mention tonight that it was a standard.
Okay.
None whatsoever.
Okay.
I said before, previously, I did not want to set a precedent. Last comment from the last meeting, Greg.
All right, and can you confirm that you said you, there, there would not be a ten-foot separation necessary between the house and the garage? For fire conditions because the lake is there?
I did not make that statement.
You did not?
There is, there is a ten-foot. On the side, on the north for fire access if needed.
No, I, I believe, I just wanted to confirm in listening to the tape from the last meeting that you said you would not need a ten-foot separation for the fire because the lake is there.
I think that statement was made and Cindy corrected it, saying the foremarshall requires it, and I think that requirement is included in tonight's motion.
Okay, and then the last thing I want to find out, Richard, you said they're going to have to tear the garage down. First before worrying about the house if, should they want to expand Park Street. Is that correct?
No, you, you misstated me completely. I said, you made a comment about sidewalks, did you not, Greg?
No, I, Cindy made the comment that Park Street is looking to expand Park Street.
And they said by doing what?
By possibly putting in sidewalks in other areas, and you said.
I said if, listen very carefully, if something like that may have to. It possibly would be that your garage might be in the way, who knows? I, I drove past there today. There's a lot of places. That are very close to Park Street that may be involved.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Just wanted to confirm that.
Any other questions or comments? Any public comments made that we need to? In that case.
I, I have one comment, Dick.
Go ahead, because we have, we can make any comments we need before we close it. Go ahead.
Maybe tomorrow I'll, I'll bring you my drawing and a typed-out copy of the motion, and I would like those included in the minutes, please.
Can you please email that to me so I can include it in the minutes?
Yeah, I'll bring it to you tomorrow.
Perfect.
And then Cindy, also on the other one thing too, is when we have another meeting next time. We'll have to. Go over those amendments that, you know, you're going to revise for us when you get chance.
Yep, I've been looking at that.
Yeah, no rush. I mean, we can do that whenever we have another meeting.
Can I? Kind of paralyzed by the election, but.
I know you are.
Can I, can I make a comment?
Go ahead. Is this Zach?
This is Chuck.
Oh, Chuck, oh, okay, Chuck, go ahead, yes.
I just, you know, when we're talking about pulling the, the house. Off of the north side setback, I mean, can we consider for a minute the shape of the house? I don't know if you can see that, but it's a triangle. And that little dark area is what we are picking up the house and moving it to the south for. Does that make sense?
No. No.
You see the drawing I've had? I have. There's a very, there's a very sliver portion of a triangle that's sitting over the north side setback.
Yes, yes, okay.
That's, that's.
What are you saying about that one?
This little triangle that's very low to the ground is why we're moving the house to the south. It's, you know, this is not a square house. It's a triangle.
Okay.
And also the height. Is a triangle. So it's not like we're doing a big, huge square. That's getting lifted three feet. It's a little deeper talking about because of the shape of the house. This is. This is kind of minimal as far as I'm concerned.
Okay.
I don't know if you guys can see this.
It's kind of hard from what you're told. I can, I can barely see it, but yes. Okay. Any other comments? Well, in that case, then I'd like to close the CBA meeting of August nineteenth, twenty twenty, and.
Is that a motion?
We have to have a motion?
Yeah, and a roll call.
Move.
Did I hear a motion to adjourn?
Yes. Yes, I move to adjourn.
In second, Steph?
Yes.
Roll call.
Bont?
Yes.
Baugh?
Yes.
Velacity? Zerfus?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.
Okay, listen, folks, thank you very much. This is very troubling times as we have to be on.